Good morning.
In financials this week, we have one separate obligation transfer from the local construction fund. We have two private conferences, one for community development and one for job and fancy services. And in the payments, we have a bunch of annual maintenance contracts payments for the auditor and MVP. One of them is to man a fund for the annual MVP maintenance for the auditor's office, ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. And sixty-nine cents, there's two payments to the source for the GIS department, forty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. And two payments of thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four thousand for the network security system. And those are all annual maintenance contracts for the network. Network and social.
Okay. I read this late last night on an airplane going back. Mental health construction, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Is that through to their board?
Yes, it was.
So is there generators, transitional center?
Generators should be working. And if you have the...
I heard some conversation from them about that there's some internal... And I wasn't sure that they approved that.
Yes, so before they send their requests over, they are... their board action is attached to it. Commissioner Lachas is requesting the board approve an executive resolution number seventeen dash zero four, itemizing the financials for the meeting of January ninth.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Spiller?
Yes.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning.
Very good. That's been me, right?
That's right.
I'm here's office, I'm here's office.
This week too.
We're here, requested authorization for getting the project using force account basis for two thousand seventeen. Like one who could like, a little bit on what force can means for you.
Sure.
Basically, in a nutshell, comes to roads and very busy with blocks. We have our own forces to unwind the cost of maintenance. After that, our means for maintenance regulation. We have two abilities, including construction. But this force account, so what it sets up is limits on what we can do. Just because we can't do something, just means we shouldn't.
Going off the grid.
Just because you have a hand in the mail, doesn't mean you climb up and you can go right.
Okay.
The process, contractors have better tools. And you kind of get out a bridge that's got to repair. Certain things we can do, you see across all of the guys you're doing. What we do is we follow estimated, let's say, the cost of transportation, standard rates that we have published. And meets, we're underneath these limits of thirty thousand. The road kind of... All work, everybody, we keep it down. And we use that to have a competitive rate.
Okay.
Specifically thirty-six inch wall, you know, you're gonna need a forty-inch. You can't even shoot. Sorry. More efficient for a contractor. Basically, that's what this is.
Okay.
It's your request. Make sure we follow the rule.
The county's office is requesting the board approve an executive resolution of seventeen dash zero five, authorizing the term year. So undertake projects on the force account in certain cases for the year two thousand seventeen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Spiller?
Hi.
They're not a quarter.
One more, one more. All of them, all of them. I need you to...
It's a money. Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
I've got your time?
Yes.
You make the back okay?
What?
Did I just make your back okay?
On this?
We didn't quite as well as you. We went to better than you.
Yeah. So, yeah, you're on YouTube doing some nice moving moves there.
Anyway, this is the violence against hardy doctors, two crimes, it's like grand. This is the pre-award conditions. We've already been awarded, now we have a pre-award condition, and then there'll be another time when it will be awarded.
The only question for the sake of tenders, well, if we knew, there has been brought up by a passing prosecutor, the question of whether we consolidate the DLCs, that we have them across multiple departments. And I'll just bring this up as a note for something for you to look at or to talk about. If you ever get back to something like that.
She's definitely retired. She primarily takes care of the domestic violence case.
Okay.
So she's, you know, right up on top of the legal, the violent domestic. Where somebody's charged, she takes care of it. And the brain actually covers her entire salary.
We agree on multiple of these men have brains, consolidating those under one office, my opinion. There was a fraud, I don't know if it was good or bad or something. Both of you dance. Did you get... what I heard from State Joyce, who's a prosecutor, was that you were... Right now, there's a handoff between the DLC folks and department of departments and transition to the legal process. So sometimes it's a disconnect, victim of all the drop, that kind of stuff. You get no consistency for a... Do you agree with that?
Actually, I think he was referring more to the other position, Tracy Jordan, here. This position, I don't think.
So victims of crime, is that right?
This is the violence against women.
You're talking about the vote?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, I'm gonna talk too long. Yeah, that's fine.
The sheriff's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, standard assurances and free of board conditions for the Stat Violence Against Women Act, grant two thousand sixteen W F D A two eight two one four, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars, sixty-five cents, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, seventy-three cents, from Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, with a local match of seventeen thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars, ninety-two cents, from the Jod County General Fund, and one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars in the law enforcement trust fund, for the period January first, two thousand seventeen, through December third, two thousand seventeen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Spiller?
Hi.
Mr. Spiller?
Hi.
The sheriff's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, standard assurances and free of board conditions for the Stat Violence Against Women Act, grant two thousand sixteen W F D A two eight two one four A, in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars, seventy-three cents, eight thousand, sixty-seven, seventy-two dollars, ninety-two cents, from Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, with a local match of two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, forty-three cents, from the Jod County General Fund. This grant is for the period January first, two thousand seventeen, through March third, two thousand seventeen.
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Spiller?
Hi.
Thank you.
Always try to make it special.
Oh, yeah. Because I would die by now, so thank you. This is just terrible. I have another person for a time. She's... I think she'll be glad. Now, almost go again. That's why we love these one-year probationary periods, I feel thrilled that we do this. The county's office is requesting the board approve county criminal case repositioning, part ten of the emergency four dash ones, for the effect of January seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, at the rate of eleven dollars, seventy-four cents per hour, within one year probationary period. This offer of the board is continued upon successful condition of the required frequent plumb conditions.
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Hi.
Thank you. Exactly.
That is a habit. There is additional copies up here on the counter, if anybody is interested in the reordering. There's a lot, I'd kind of like to see it. Because I'll go over my shows here very fast. Just grab this thing. I can share. It's... Yeah, we need the notes on it. I'll share with you. I'll share with you. Okay.
Want to see it real quick? I'll get it right back.
This is it? Oh, that was it? That is the only one?
He told me get that from it.
Well, I've got a bunch of two.
How bro.
Nice to meet you, sir. Hey, you've been here in a meeting, I mean.
Yeah.
See, our notes are still on it.
The question is, there was in the past, a camera that put the meetings onto the website. What's the transition here that changed that? Eliminated that?
I guess the easiest thing is, is we're not doing it. That's the easiest way, because we need to explain. We're not required by law to do it. It takes a lot of time to do it. We're paying the county administrator to have to worry about putting stuff up, loading and stuff. People want to see the meeting, come to the meeting. Or if you've got residents that want to come in, now there's a camera in the back, I don't know if that's my guest or his camera, who does that is? Whoever is recording that meeting, get the demo and get a copy.
Thank you. May I ask you my question?
Yeah, thank you.
The sheriff's office is requesting the board approve the Jod County Commission for two thousand seventeen. Do you want to do the first two together?
Well, yeah, let's do the first three together.
Okay. There's the first. The first changes together. Let's do all the front page changes.
We'll do the first two, then we'll do the other one, and then it's the next. The sheriff's office is requesting the board approve the Jod County Commission for two thousand seventeen.
I'll make that motion, second.
I heard my name was.
The hammer.
Your votes today.
The ballot.
A peaceful transfer.
The sheriff's office is requesting the board approve the Jod County Commission for two thousand seventeen.
All right, we do that.
Commissioners will be held in the Jod County Commissioners' chambers or alternate location as necessary, where regularly required notice to change location is provided. Every Tuesday, unless called, and justice may to add a Thursday meeting at nine o'clock the end, during holidays, or to schedule any regular, additional regular meetings as needed to meet the required number of meetings for you. Request for reasonable and honest notification of all commissioners' meetings at which any specific types of public business could be discussed, may be requested out of the commissioners' clerk provision, or being on vacation, may suit but are not limited to emailing the agenda of meetings to all subscribers on the distribution list, or by self-addressed rooms, envelope provided by the person requesting the information. The board may have additional meetings as required at the time placed as needed. Any meeting called by Jod County Office of Police Department, Health, County Sheriff, or the County Bureau of Customs, any meetings of the Jod County Township Trustees and Course Association, any meetings of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio City Area, any regular or special meetings of the county or the county's district forum of the board commissioners is or may be present, any township board of trustees meeting, city and village council, Jod County Airport Authority, Jod County Board of Health, Jod County Health and Highway Council, Jod County Trundle Solid Waste Management District, Jod Soil and Water Conservation District meetings, Illinois Commissioners, Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, Northeast Ohio Consortium Council of Governors, Community Improvement Corporation, Portage Jod County Health and Administration Center, Committee for Investment Advisory Committee, Ohio Public Works Commission, District Seven Integrated Committees, Jod County Agricultural Society, Care Board meetings, meetings to honor and the invitation to this meeting by the Jod County Commissioners to attend groundbreaking opening celebrations and real service and recovery, meetings with any organization or other political entities to discuss items of mutual concern. The time, place, and purpose of all special meetings, in addition to regularly scheduled meetings, will be given at least twenty-four hours in the name of such meetings to the news media that have requested notification, except in the event of an emergency requiring immediate official access. In the event of an emergency, the board member or board members calling the meeting shall notify the news media that have requested notification immediately at the time of place and purpose of the meeting.
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Spiller?
Hi.
Sorry.
That's her.
I... That part didn't read. Okay, so next we have, the county's sheriff's office is requesting the board approve the appointments of numbers to the board of county commissioners to boards in place for two thousand seventeen and the following. Some of these, the board president is required to be the primary. As we go through these, if there's any issues with what's on here, please let me know in your mentions.
And the meeting of the board, we were just discussing, if we could fly.
You want to switch those?
Yeah.
Which ones are that?
For the meeting of the board. We're gonna put Skip as primary, myself as alternate.
Okay. Under item number seven, I think the president's required to be on, I see.
Yeah, there's a little asterisk there. So the president has to be, so that will be... And you'll notice solid waste policy is also required.
Dave, got a quick question for you. Health district, I don't remember.
That's pretty rare, but they, you know, they are the ones that will then point to the health district, the board of directors, or whoever.
Yeah, their committee.
Yeah. So it's like an oversight committee, and they don't meet very often.
I was gonna say, I don't remember them meeting.
I don't know, I think we got no occasion last year at all.
Yeah, very frequently.
So Ralph gets a break, can we ask him to meet more?
Have one, just sort of.
He's not offended enough.
Do you see any other issues with that thing there?
Do you still want to do that best minute, that's my commitment?
That's...
That's when they usually come here to have a...
We have a better one. So, yeah, I need to see it.
Everything all good?
Yes.
For Noaca, for its tree, you're gonna do, change it. That's doing, that one looks good.
Okay, so then it is, Q D P board is primary is primary, alternate is fiddler, board of division, primary Lennon, alternate Claypool. Q D corrections, primary Claypool, alternate Lennon. C S E improvement is all three commissioners, court house security advisory committee, primary Lennon, alternate Claypool. G M first, primary Lennon, alternate Claypool. Financial review. The primary is president, so that would be fiddler, and alternate is Claypool. Jod County Agricultural Society is all three commissioners, Jod Trundle Solid Waste Policy, the primary is president, so that would be fiddler. Jod Trundle Solid Waste Board of Directors is all three commissioners. County District Advisory Board, this primary is fiddler, alternate Claypool. Investment advisory committee is two commissioners, fiddler, Claypool. Micro filming board, primary Claypool, alternate Lennon. Noaca is going to be Claypool, alternate Leonard Berhany, Lennon, alternate Shane Hajar, and fiddler, alternate Joe Patel. NACC is primary Claypool, alternate Lennon. Lending commission board is all three commissioners, Portage Jod County Health and Administration Center, all three commissioners. Records commission required to be present, so fiddler is primary, alternate Claypool. Revolving one or local revolving one is primary Lennon, alternate Claypool.
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Spiller? Mr. Spiller?
Hi.
I'm not... Do you want to go through the whole?
He pages you.
Well, I have a question, we'll get to that when we're done there, but do you want to do the bottom, the rest of this page together? The sheriff's office is requesting the board appoint David Blair County Administrator. Sheriff's office is requesting the board appoint Leonard Berhany, Director of Administrative Services. Sheriff's office is requesting the board appoint Christine Blair as Commissioner, number thirteen oh six. Sheriff's office is requesting the board list the following personnel, exempted exemptions, with the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, in compliance with section one twenty-four point eleven A nine, under the Power Rights Code. The Blair County Administrator, then the Leonard Berhany Director of Administrative Services, and Christine Blair as Commissioner's court. Sheriff's office is requesting the board approve the following staff appointment. Chief Building Enforcement official, Michael Hallston. Director of Department of Aging and Justice for both. Director of Media and Economic Development and Fair Housing, Emily Stocker. Director of Department of Emergency Services, Dale Wedge. Director of Family Services, section one twenty-four eleven, Craig Swenson. Director of Labor, Len Burnett. Director of Transportation, section one twenty-four eleven A twenty-five, Michael Pasworth. Director of Water Resources and Sanitary Engineers, Gerard Morgan. Director of County Home Superintendent, Karen DiCova. Dog Award, Macamido. And acknowledge those staff appointments displaced in the unclassified service pursuant to O R C one twenty-four eleven A three B, and who are providing the unclassified service destination acknowledgement forms.
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool? Dramatic.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, yes, that means... Sheriff's office is requesting the board appoint Joe Patel as drainage engineer, and set the compensation to the biweekly rate of three eighty-one thirty-four, to be effective for period two.
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Hi.
Sheriff's office is requesting the board appoint Richard Mann as county acres and further approve execute the two thousand seventeen Ohio Department of Agricultural Appointment for county area inspected form to be effective January first, two thousand seventeen, at an hourly rate of twelve dollars per hour, and a monthly interest rate of eight point five three five.
Before we make that motion, would he be willing to come here and tell us what they do?
I'm sure he's...
Yeah, explain it.
Yeah, he was here last year, very education. The bee guy.
Yeah, inspection. Do you know bees? Doesn't get a great job.
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
All right.
Sheriff's office is requesting the board appoint Gerard Morgan to serve as a convailing wage coordinator for Jod County for two thousand seventeen. Sheriff's office is requesting the board appoint Nicholas Boris to serve as a convailing coordinator for Jod County for two thousand seventeen.
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool? Sheriff's office is requesting the board approve an executive resolution number seventeen dash zero six, authorizing the county administrator to exercise powers delegated hereby under O R C three oh five point three zero. And just so you do note, the request that you made to approve the hiring of personnel under the Sheriff's hiring authority has been included in the resolution. If you have any questions with that, that was the only change that was made from the previous, and that was per your guys' request at the board session, to find out if that was allowable. It is. And so I did include it in the resolution, if you want to think it out, we can, or maybe other things.
And again, it's under your direction, which means you're gonna get advance notice from email, these are the things that I would be looking at, so if you had any questions, you might have to pull it.
So what was the add-on?
The add-on that I could, I could take action, hire someone that's already been, you know, you guys approved the hire. And if you had any questions, or you want to give the information on how to take action, so we can see if it's compatible.
And that would be under the book department?
Under your hiring.
Except our office?
Our office is under the hiring authority as well, so, yeah, I mean, if you want to change there, you want to pull that out for now, that's...
I would, I would, I would move to, I'm okay as far as, you know, everything else, but this office, as far as that goes, just because I think that there would be somewhat of a conflict if we had the situation where... So I moved to...
So we can just do it as...
It's not like we're hiring our people for this office.
Right, you know what I'm saying, I just don't want to put you in the spot of conflict. That's my biggest thing.
Can we just say excluding Sheriff's Office? Okay, well, we'll do, if we can make a motion, if you guys are okay with that, and then we'll...
Yeah. There's a whole list of things.
You have something really sexy that you have to prove.
The only one.
Yeah, no, no, I'm good.
The only one that was... Is if you guys...
You gotta, you know, how I just make...
Okay.
I would say so, for sure. I think that that would be, as far as the J F S hires, I think that that would be one that you should be able to approve, because they're hired when they come.
Yeah, that'd be all, the acknowledgements. Great idea.
We want to be a value add here, you know, for those things, it's like people retiring, I say, oh, yeah, we approved, they retire. It's kind of a waste of our time.
I agree.
And so it's nice to acknowledge people like this.
Okay, and what I will do is I will redo this resolution with those two additions to the general design form, just sign the revised resolution. If you guys want to move forward with how it is, and you can go ahead and sign that, and then we'll do a reprint.
All right, second.
Yeah. So do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Sheriff's office is requesting the board establish the house charges at five cents per blocking weight, under unusual confinement charge, until total reaches a minimum amount of dollars for the year two thousand seventeen, to the department under the direction of Jod County Commissioners. Sheriff's office is requesting the board establish the copy charge at ten cents per load, or legal copy of the new charge, so total reaches a minimum amount of one dollar for the year two thousand seventeen, to the department under the direction of Jod County Commissioners. Sheriff's office is requesting the board establish a common target of one dollar on exits for the year two thousand seventeen. To the department under the direction of the charge, and that one extension will be...
I'll make that motion.
There are the very last one.
So we see on the copy charges? Check. Yes.
Hi, Chris, do you want to go through every single one? Seems to be wanting to be as listed, um, that means...
That's what I...
You gotta put that jog before you... Put that jog thing on your hair.
Well, we'll do just a general motion, then encapsulate all of the rest here, and then, so the department, I think, requesting the board approve the addition of Jessica Cole, Robert Seppes, and Ed Shorber, so they need this to probably need a commission credit account. And the board is requesting the board approve the addition of... for 2,000, VP gas for 2,000, Western Reserve Farm Cooperative for 2,000. Building Department has a staple for $250. Wax Gas Card is a sheriff's office and Western Reserve Farm Cooperative at $18,000. The Commissioner's Office Visa, $4,000. Community Development Staples, $1,500. And Jessica Prebicek Visa, $1,500. County Home has attractive supply for $1,200 a month, Walmart Community, $1,200 a month. Department of Labor Services, APN, $10,000. Scout Services encapsulates eight. Drive Ready Union Visa, $7,500. Walmart Community, $3,000. APN, each annual $1,000. Wax Gas Card, $1,000. And then the Maintenance Department has their individual employees listed as dollar amounts for their homes and go, including the ones that we included for aging, JFS, and County Home at $1,000 except for, and which are used from $5,000. Transit Visa, $4,000. Staples, $1,000. And then the COVID 204 has a Bank of America Mastercard for the judge, Mr. Rezeki and Henry Laurie, at dollar amounts of $2,000, $1,500, and $2,500.
I'll make that motion. Second. Mr. Martin? Yes.
Mr. Claypool? And then the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the application for authorization to permit the use of county credit cards for personnel policies, 711 forms, ORC 301.27, per month for filing. For all the names listed for the Department on Aging, Movement Department. The Commissioner's Office, Community Development, County Home, Department of Maintenance, Department of Transit, and Transit, and the Department of Transit and the Department of Transit and Transit. These will be included in the minutes and will also be submitted to the Auditor's Office. Good thinking.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool.
Right.
Yes. 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 The Department of Emergency Services is requesting the Board appoint the following members to the DBS, Terrorism, Innovation, and Planning Group for a one-year term starting December 31, 2017. For the Fire Service, we have John Fraser, primary Rose Fire Department, John Orklin, alternate Chester, the Fire Department, Emergency Medical, Larry Gasberg, primary Shart Fire Department, Mark Esslin, alternate Monson Fire Department. Police Department is Mark Purchase, Police Department Chester Police. Sheriff's Office, Scott Hill of Brandon, Sheriff's Office. Emergency Management, Dale Wedge, primary DBS, Roger Peterson, alternate DBS. Public Works, Gerard Morgan, Water Resources. Public Health, Bob Weisek, Health Commissioner. Township, James DeMaurice Burton Township Trustee. Mayor's Office, Randall Sharp, primary City of Sharton. Paul Hornak, alternate City of Sharton. Commissioners, Dave Blair, John County Commissioner. He's been in that position for several years. The only changes that I saw come through for this year were in regards to Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department.
So he's been there.
Should we give somebody this opportunity? So I, I'd motion everybody except DeMaurice on that.
So we'll remove the township. So all of the positions except for the Township, James DeMaurice Burton Township.
I'll second that.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Right.
The Department of Child and Family Services is requesting the Board reappoint the following members to the Family Services Planning Committee for a one-year term ending December 31, 2017. Jessica Bold, Manburg, Yuki Clark, Scott Hill of Brandon, Dave Blair, Terry Malnar, Nancy Sillback, and Jimmy Lee.
Make that motion.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Right.
The Department of Child and Family Services is requesting the Board reappoint the following members to the Family Services Planning Committee for a one-year term ending December 31, 2017. Jessica Bold, Manburg, Yuki Clark, Scott Hill of Brandon, Dave Blair, Terry Malnar, Nancy Sillback, and Jimmy Lee.
Make that motion.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Right.
I don't know what I knew until later in the month until you said for additional time charging. That's on my mind.
I agree. Got to be a record.
You're still talking.
We're at, are we? Are we? I think we're all doing.
We're, we're, yeah, we're at the end of it.
I am going to bring up one, one thing. The, the WACCA has various committees that they're trying to sort out right now in terms of who's going to be sitting where. I submitted my name for the Governance Committee, Policy Committee, Planning Committee, and Executive Committee, not knowing what between people I want. I certainly don't want to sit in all those committees, but with, in the past, Blake has sat on all those committees, representation there, so if you guys want to throw your names into the hands of one of those committees and let me know, the, the meat, the work is actually done in the Governance, Executive, and Policy Committees or the Planning Committee. And so if there's two in particular that I'd like to sit on, the Governance and Executive Committees, but, so with that said, I'll bring you out if you guys can throw your names out there as far as what you would like. At the next board meeting, they're going to be naming our representatives to those various committees, so.
Well, that, that's something new to this in the WACCA meeting yet. You know, I would, you know, look to, you know, either, you know, go to the first meeting and get a better understanding before that, or even if there's a recommendation from the Board as far as which, you know, to think, you know, obviously the ones you decide need like Dionne or you think I could be.
I would suggest for you, if you're interested, I would suggest the Planning Committee. The Planning Committee is where a lot of the, they discuss things that they're going to be doing, so on and so forth. Executive Committee, Governance Committee, they're all talking about policies. So what's the Planning Committee and the Policy Committee discusses various things they want to change. And the External Affairs Committee, those three committees, the Policy Planning and the, and the External Affairs Committee, they discuss where they want to go, like the $500 lobbyists, they did that in the External Affairs Committee. They approve that, then they take that to the Governance and Executive Committees to approve one. And so once it gets approved there, then it goes to the General Board for approval. Generally, the General Board just rubber stamps things, there's very little discussion in the General Board meeting, they're just, it's just pushed through. So the real need is any opportunity to alter the direction, I think it's done in the Policy Planning and the Executive Governance Committee gets to mix things, it's like a veto committee so to speak, so that's one of the reasons, like I said, I want to make sure the whole list of committees, but I don't really care as long as we're covered and I know we've got good solid representation in those meetings, I don't really care. So I don't know, tend those or your take on those, but I've already submitted a request to, we have, by the way, favorable situation with that. The trustee out of Medina is going to be in the presidency, more of a conservative, he's a conservative guy and tends to be more friendly towards John County. Also, so up until this point, we've not had Prince in.
Do they recommend those appointments?
The, the bylaws are written, the President gets, the President ultimately decision, we can weigh in and say we would like whatever. Now, I don't like the bylaws personally, I think we have to determine ourselves, we prove this on these committees, but we get to ask and then we do whatever and then President chooses.
Okay.
And so that's just really so bad. Throwing your cap in the ring. I've already thrown my, just because I didn't know where the two of you were on all of that, I just threw them in to make sure.
Like I said, I'm, you know, new to it, you know, I'm not afraid to jump in.
But if you'd like, I'll, I'll back off the Planning Commission and the Policy Committee. I don't know what, how many of you want to sit on particularly, your alternatives, but we need to have good solid invitation. You heard this morning, the Planning Commission, the WACCA is attempting to make a move to, you know, battle the power of transportation, start doing some of the planning for our transportation. So, you know, we need all people at the table who are going to at least be aware of what's going on, so to be forewarned is to be for our, you know, security here, not at the table you're on the menu. We've been on the menu for a while, so.
My, my goal would be is is to have him in position so that in three years, he could be President of the Board there. So I'm not sure which position we need to place him in to.
Yeah, well, in any of the committees, I'm not sure.
Because I believe that, I believe that my, my position would be is is to recommend that he be placed either as a secretary, vice chair, I believe it's secretary, so that next year he would be vice chair and the third year he would go on to be President of, of the Board.
We don't get to choose, we get to choose the committees, Ron and the President of the Board picks which one to be the secret. Okay. Okay, you can choose, you can be the secretary, whatever. But you have to be, generally speaking, politically, the reality is they want to know who you are and where they're going to put you in the secrets.
Right.
And so we need to start attending to the meeting so they can see who you are and get to know whatever it is that's to be, you know, so.
Because here's the thing is in three years, we're going to have President position on that board.
Theoretically, it's not a mandate, that's traditionally, that's been a tradition. I don't have to look at bylaws if that's required.
I, I believe the rotation is in place, so I'm just saying the third year would be.
Yeah, we could look, I mean, we could look at that.
I mean, it's something for us to be, you know, concerned about.
Sure.
To, to pre-plan that.
Yeah, I would say, you know, maybe further discussion, you know, strategically, what's the best way to do this? Since, like I said, I attended a, you know, WACCA meeting and that, it would probably be a, be a good thing for you.
Well, yeah.
I mean, they haven't had one yet as far as. Yeah, they'll be having a board meeting, so quite a few, want us to make your name. Again, I'll, I'll make the request or you can make the request, you're basically chief.
For the planning and the policy you're suggesting?
Yeah, the planning and the policy and I can then, I can ask for the executive. As per everything's.
Yeah.
Ralph, did you, are there any particular committees that you want to?
You know, I actually, I've got some, some on my, on my desk there of what it is, I guess we could just bring that up next week. It's not, it's got to be dire today, correct?
We're going to look, of course, they're going to be approving between now and the next board meeting.
Okay. And the next board meeting is, so we'll have next week to talk about.
Yeah, we can do that. I bring it up just for, so we can have that conversation.
Okay. So, so in close, basically, let's, we'll just brief here as far as acknowledgements, announcements, there's. Nothing here really, first shattering, others than next week, we'll have a meeting at nine o'clock.
On Thursday.
Or correction, on Thursday, yeah.
Because we're on holiday on Monday.
See this meeting, we're doing this.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
You get a, you get a response from the Dodge Association.
It is. You should have, you and Tim.
Agreed.
And the only other thing that I have was.
That's why we're.
In February, it's the 5th through the 7th, November 13th, so I'm too much.
Where's the member for?
That's the A. M. train.
You got a, a train.
I have Tim going from, I don't know.
That's, that's up to you.